Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, March 21st, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session on workforce housing needs.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for March 21st, 2022. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh
Here.
Council members Farber
Here.
Resnick
Here.
Russell
Here.
Sprank
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell
Here.
Thank you. Our work session topic is workforce housing needs early efforts. I will turn it over to Housing and Community Development Director Alexis Steger.
Good evening, Alexis Steger, Housing and Community Development Director. Tonight, we're going to have Jill Connors and Dave Lyons speaking about our workforce housing shortage. They're going to kind of brief you on some of the early efforts that we've been taking in this area, just preparing you for what's next in this area for us, kind of what was before and what's coming up. So I am going to turn it over right away to Jill Connors because Dave Lyons promised a break between the work session and City Council and lots of time for questions. So I'll hold them to it. Jill Connors, Economic Development Director.
Hi there, Jill Connors, Economic Development Director, with a cold, so therefore here to talk to you tonight about housing. And why I'm here is because it's really a workforce issue. We've done a really good job of attracting jobs, getting employers here. They're very happy about that. They're not happy about the fact that they're not sure where their people are going to have, going to live. Over half of local employers are saying that finding housing for their employer, employees is an issue and is hindering their ability to hire. We know from the data that a lot of people that are coming here for jobs are taking homes outside of the metro area. And so we need to, and we also want to think about supply and demand and what that's done to the pricing. We have tools for low-income housing development. Higher-end housing kind of takes care of itself. There's that middle market that we're having an issue with. And so Dave Lyons is here to give you hopefully some good news, but probably some not-so-good news that's really important to hear about. What can we do to make sure that we've got enough housing for all of our residents and our workforce? Dave Lyons.
Dave Lyons, working with Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, 900 Jackson Street. Yes, this is how it works. Leader, manager, nerd. Okay, all right. So here, we're going to go launch into it. I was asked to do some research into what we were hearing more and more often from the Info Action Programs at Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, which was housing was becoming an issue. Housing should be a priority. Housing was actually beginning to impede workforce efforts, and not just for beginning-level jobs, but for every type of position in the community. So I spoke with the city team. We chatted through the process. It's such a big issue that there's really going to be two sessions. There we go. This first session is really just kind of the status and impact of the shortage that we're beginning to see. Particular focus on the area of workforce housing, middle market. There'll be a follow-up session on accessibility and affordability, also key issues. And then hopefully, within a couple of months, we'll have been able to come together, public and private, and put together some strategy documents for your consideration. So our goal would be to begin the process tonight, continue it at the next meeting, and be in a position to give you lots of advice and choices and information as you enter into your August planning sessions, because this is a huge topic area. I've said it so many times, it's ingrained. This is a community that's goal is to be viable, livable, and equitable. And that means environmental and good use of stewardship materials, economic prosperity, and cultural-sultral vibrancy. I have been working on that, as you know, in sustainability, renewable energy, broadband, et cetera. And I have to tell you that upon my analysis, when we look at workforce housing in middle market, we're failing on all three of those pillars that the city has set out. So it's a pretty big challenge. As we start looking at the challenge, the numbers are pretty clear. Homeowner vacancy rates, half a percent. New units built as a percentage of current housing stock, half a percent. And by the way, anything below 1% in a community is considered to be high stress. 1.3% rental vacancy rate, less than half of what they consider to be a stress level within a community. And at the same time, we have projection for 7.6% employment growth. So it isn't going to go away on its own. It's going to get worse without action. So what does worse look like? Right now, if you take the existing demographics we have and anticipated job growth, we are short about 1,200 housing units in the city of Dubuque. And if you take what we've been able to accomplish in our existing strategies for the last number of years, and you project those out over the same time period, you'll add 681 new units. That means we're getting about half the job done. And it isn't just about the units themselves. It's about what sits behind those housing units, and that's population growth. Dubuque's population is up over the last 10 years, but it isn't what you're seeing in some of the other developed communities that are really our key competitors. Cedar Rapids and Madison, for example, one to the south, one to the north. And as you look at this, I think it's important to look at these communities because a lot of folks will say, well, you know, Dubuque's running out of land. It's a mature city. It's not going to have the kind of housing growth. Well, you could say the same thing for Cedar Rapids and Madison, but that hasn't held them back in being able to accomplish better-than-average growth. And if you see the growth in the area and wonder where it is, it's heading out. Here is a percent of population growth over the last decade. And you can see Dubuque is growing. That's excellent. One of only a few metros in the community. But it's beginning to look a lot, kind of like Des Moines and other places, where the growth is occurring in the population areas outside of the community. As you can see, going west, Asbury, Piast, Eppworth, Farley, Dyersville. So Jill's point is pretty prominently displayed here, and that is Dubuque continues to generate a significant number of new jobs and new opportunities, but the new workforce isn't necessarily living here. Here's new units per capita. So new units of housing being added per capita, same type of trend you're seeing where Dubuque is generating some growth, but there's a lot of growth in the area. And so the question comes up, what do we need to be able to do to not turn down growth in other places, but to turn up growth in Dubuque? A lot of places are trying different things, and we'll bring some ideas to you in the future. Forest City is a community that actually buys and develops land. Waterloo is a community that's begun to attract developers by giving away or charging a dollar for land to be redeveloped in areas of the community. Council Bluffs is recognizing that it has some topographical challenges, just like Dubuque does, a little different there, being in the river versus in the bluffs. But they're doing some things such as using field dirt and preparing the hard costs of an area before developers come in to grade and create lots. Cedar Rapids, again, this one's a little unusual, and that is that they are actually putting housing in with urban slum and blight redevelopment, stretching TIF a bit. I'm not sure if they have an overstretched, but it shows what people are willing to do here to generate workforce housing. And then when we get to the equitable issue, this is a one I stole from the Iowa Finance Authority, so I can't take credit for this, but they did a review of jobs growing in the state of Iowa that are not earning enough to be able to afford to buy a home in the metro cities. Childcare workers, food service, EMT, grocery store, preschool teachers, all high percentages that can't afford to live in the communities in which they work. And when you begin thinking about it in terms of renting, Dubuque's got a pretty tough spot right now. 43% of Dubuque renters spend more than 30% of their income on housing. Why do I pick the 30% to match? That's the federal definition of housing burdened. A household is housing burdened if it is spending more than 30% of its income on housing. 25% of renters spend more than 50% of their income. And under the federal definition, that's severely housing burdened. And when we talk about homes, the average valuation of new single-family homes being built in Dubuque, 375,000. That's probably not a surprise to you. But when we get into the equity side of the issue, current new unit prices are not going to improve affordability in Dubuque. And to afford a new single-family home that's being generated by the existing strategies means a community's family needs to earn over $100,000 a year to participate in the homebuyer process. And as Jill also pointed out, businesses are saying it's not just an issue. It needs to be a priority. So this is from the most recent quarter of Info Actions taken by Dubuque Greater Dubuque Development. 42% of Dubuque businesses said the amount and affordability of housing needs to be a community priority. We're going to talk about some opportunities. We're still vetting this number. Sometimes it's duplex versus side-by-sides. They're going to, they're going to straighten me out. But Dubuque, let me just say, is not taking advantage of multifamily-owned homeownership opportunities like communities around the state and around the country are doing, particularly in areas of infill opportunity where there's already a street, there's already sewer, there's already water. And when you think about what's getting left behind, you're in your budget times, so I know how tough those are. If Dubuque only had an average year for the state in starting new homes, in 2020, it would have generated an additional 112,000 worth of property tax revenues that the city would be able to apply to other types of priorities which you are always trying to balance. So there is also a financial reason why we would love people to be building their new homes and staying here in the community. As you know, in your positions, you constantly hear of programs that are available to address housing issues, and you hear them announced at the federal and at the state level. Yes, there are a lot. Here's a some that we were able to glean through and take a look at that should be being used in Dubuque. And sometimes they are, but I have to tell you, from what I could see last year, we did not, as developers and builders in this community, take advantage of these programs like we should have. I noted in, called Mike, the governor's office had decided that it had some additional funding available to support low-income housing tax credit projects. So $3 million worth carved out of federal funding that came to the state to help anybody that was standing in line that year for low-income housing tax credit projects, not only to take a few more projects, but also to deal with the increased costs of the supply chain. I quickly looked at the list. There were no Dubuque projects in that list. So what we're trying to do also to get ready for strategy issues is to look at every one of these and find out what can we do as a community, first, and then with our developers and our citizens, second, to take advantage of these. And I'll just pull one out that we're working on and we'll be back to you shortly with. Workforce Housing Tax Incentive Program. State of Iowa created a new program, understands it's got to be very, very critical to get new workforce housing, puts some good tax credits behind it, and then they start falling short. They basically say you can use them for brownfield, grayfield housing development, repair or rehabilitation of dilapidated housing stock, upper-story redevelopment, good for Dubuque, great for small county cities, and greenfield housing development, but only if you're a small city. If you're a city greater than 20,000, you have another step you have to do. You have to demonstrate your community is a distressed workforce housing community. So we were not able to utilize that tax credit, even if the developers had had a project unless we are designated. So we're getting busy to put you in a position to be able to apply to be a designated one. We have done the initial analysis. Greater Dubuque Development has contracted with ECIA. They have a housing arm, which is a qualified housing assessment entity for the state of Iowa and the Iowa Finance Authority. They hope to be done by April with their assessment. It'll be made available to you. But just as importantly, it's required to have an independent assessment go with the city's application. So our goal, get that done, get it in your hands, for the city to be able to do a submission by late May, so that when tax credit applications start in June, we can work with developers to get in line and take advantage of that program, both greenfield and downtown developments. And when we talk about sustainability, it's a challenge. I know this is pretty hard to see, but the, basically on your computer screen is land that the city owns. I was stunned how little land the city actually owns or controls. And then when you take the next step, how little of that could be used for housing. So really, the key is, again, as Dubuque has done, public-private partnerships that begin to bring in these areas, which, while we have done a great job of analyzing as really the potential areas that hold value for conversations on new housing. Now, not all of them. You'll see industrial parks in there. However, think of every industrial park as a housing opportunity, because often you have to buy the entire parcel. And you can't use it all for the entire parcel for industrial. Wouldn't workforce housing being a component of every one of those make a lot of sense? And wouldn't that also kind of solve some issues when you have very high-end housing nearby? What's the buffer going to look like? Well, a buffer will look like a neighborhood, not an industrial. So we really have to think about how do we increase the availability of housing development, maximize remaining land, and ensure workforce housing is a focus, because there are communities in Iowa who don't have much of a workforce housing problem. They have a low-income housing problem because they are not growing in the number of new jobs, the type of new jobs coming to the community. So I think it's an issue that is better to be proactive and address than it is to wait to address itself. And then the last issue in relationship to sustainability is you will see many communities in the country will have this reverse U, where land prices are so high that you have to basically build a half a million-dollar house to get your return on investment back. But at the same time, there is low-income housing demand, which is increasing. And we're getting more and more of the $500,000 home and the low-income apartment, which is not creating the diversity within neighborhoods and economies that are a signal to the next generation of someplace they really want to live and grow and raise a family. So again, the goal was middle-market housing and the status issues today. Come back on affordability and accessibility issues and the broader range of issues that you, the city, have, not just on workforce, but on the entire range. But to also be bringing you back, well, hopefully, a robust set of examples and programs to consider as you look at a comprehensive response to a looming workforce housing shortage. And with that, we'll take questions.
Well, you weren't kidding about moving through that for question time, so thank you very much, Dave. Appreciate that. Okay, questions, discussion. Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. So it's interesting, the city does both things. We have a program to take rental property out of being rental property. We want to make it single, you know, single-family owned. It's good for the neighborhood. It's good for those families to get, you know, the HART program fixes the house. It's for a single-family home. So we have, we have a program for more homeownership, convert rental to single-family occupied. We want new housing, but it's expensive, and yet we need cheaper. A lot of people want to keep the house down, yet landlords and developers need to make a profit. It just sounds like a rock-and-a-hard place. And we go bouncing back and forth all the time, trying to do the best we can. I know in the past 10 years, the Washington neighborhood, we've actively tried to convert some of that kind of rundown rental property into refreshed, single-family homes. And now there's a crunch in lots of different places. So I, I hope that we can do something. I, I fully expect that the private sector has a major part to do with this. I mean, and that includes making a profit. Now, that's tough to do. And, you know, so we've been going back and forth. And so do you have a unified solution for us?
That's, yes, actually. This plan, this process, hopefully, will come up with a set of recommendations that are coordinated in a way to be able to say, this is the low and moderate income housing needs and the best tools for the city. This is what we can do to incent workforce housing and keep it affordable. And here's what we can do to continue to make this the best place to build a home, no matter what cost it is. I will tell you, though, when you look at downtown and some of the area projects we're working with, yes, it's important to take a rundown rental and turn it into a single-family home for three reasons. One, more families move in. Two, you get that opportunity for ownership within the community that puts more money back into the community. And three, it has been the mechanism for wealth creation for many, many families in the last several decades. And I think it'll continue to be that. So if people can't own, they can't earn into a different lifestyle. However, there are hundreds of apartments that should be above communities' front stores, front doors, and the stores on Central and White, et cetera. And the city has started putting effort into turning those into housing, both affordable rental housing and market rental housing. So I don't think one steals from the other. I think you have to do both, and you have to do it with an eye toward making sure that that house that you just turned into a home, those two rental units, is there someplace for the people who live there to continue to live in their neighborhood at an affordable price? And that's what the strategy would hopefully do. So I'm going to say, yeah, I'll take the challenge. The answer is yes, and Alexis will back it up.
I just wanted to add to that, that as a community, we can absolutely bring forward some unified strategies across all of those spectrums. But, but these developers are also developing in other cities. And we don't control always what the carve-outs are for Iowa Finance Authority. One of the reasons that Dubuque did not have any applications for the year the governor gave a lot of extra money was because there's a duratio carve-out. And it actually took all of the money and said it was going to be going to those that were affected by duratio first, and Dubuque was not declared in that area. So developers that usually develop here found locations that were in those areas so they could get funding. They're, you know, they're there to develop, and they'll do it anywhere in the state. They'll also go to other states. So we do need to have that process in place to be able to jive. So it may be unified, and we may present to you a bunch of information, and then a new carve-out comes out, and we have to be able to adjust to it to make sure developers want to build here in Dubuque, and that they aren't always looking to build in other communities that need units as well.
Thank you. So we have, if I understand this, we have 11,000 rental units here in Dubuque and a population of around 60,000. That sounds pretty good. 11,000 units. I mean, a lot of people could fit in 11,000 units. So, you know, you would think that the supply and demand would, if there's a demand for more workforce, maybe some landlords will fix up their properties and make it fancier, or, or, you know, you're not going to make it rental property, you know, workforce property just by charging more, right? You have to, you make it, you know, worth it. So it's, again, how many, you're going to tell us how many units we should have in this area? 11,000 isn't enough. Do you have a, do you have a number that we're looking for? You said, wait a minute, another 1,200, add another 1,200. So we need 12,800 units in Dubuque, around there.
So workforce housing can be for homeownership or for rental. And you usually like to satisfy both sides, because if someone moves here, while they're trying to find a home for homeownership, they may want to rent to, hey, I have a permanent job here and come for that workforce. So you do want a mix of both rental options at that workforce unit and homeownership options as it becomes a more permanent place for them to stay.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor.
One other quick item in relationship to the home builders. You're absolutely right. I met with the home builders in January. I met with them again two weeks ago. And, and they, they deliver a message. They basically say Dubuque is not a bad place to build. It doesn't have terrible regulations like some, you know, and it might maybe a little more flexibility here or that, but not really a lot of complaints. It's a tough place to build. And so their issue came kind of through. And it is, you know, what you did in the Millwork District, you had to invest in some infrastructure in order for developers to be able to pencil it out. Your top, your topography is a little difficult, and the land left to work with is a little difficult. But they're more than willing to build here. But they've got two things that they need your help with. One is, how do I find land and make it affordable, even though I have to put more into a lot? And the second issue is, was, was pretty straightforward. Their comment was, is, I have plenty of work to do, and I need all the employees I have. And I'm going to build where it's easiest to build. And cornfields don't complain about whether or not your house is 250,000 or 300,000. So that's probably the other issue that the builders are looking for some assistance on, isn't just to make it profitable, but to make it easier or more viable to do larger projects and infill projects in Dubuque, when they know that people are going to argue with them. So. Yes, Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Dave, and Alexis, for that wonderful information. A lot of this is reminding me of a book I read years ago, which I need to dust off again, The Geography of Nowhere, where we've had this cycle of housing problems all the time. Nobody seems to quite get it, get the solution. I'm really going to be intrigued what you guys present with us. Is it like, do we need to literally bring back the idea of a boarding house? It's a need that is, that probably isn't the best, but it's not a great solution. But is that a niche? But is that a niche marketing that somebody needs to bring back? Do we need, I'd really like to know, do we need one bedroom apartments? Yeah, I'm really excited to hear about what the possibility of this is going to be. But in doing so, since we're looking at families, are we looking at this, how our senior population, some of them need to get transitioned out of their homes? So those homes are now available for this new workforce because you could attract a lot of younger people to having a smaller starter home in an established neighborhood, particularly mine. So I would really like to hear if there's any thoughts or looking into that at all. So, yeah.
So what we've been looking at on a smaller scale right now is trying to keep those, those homes into homeownership opportunities because as soon as they become a rental opportunity, it, it switches to that side that Dave talks about. It's either going to be a low income or it's going to be a market rate, and it drops from that middle. And you're talking about the middle that we need, and those homes are the price of that middle that you need. So that's what we're trying right now is to keep them into homeownership in those neighborhoods so that our long-term solution can be to keep, to transition them over for the workforce housing. So that is in our, in our plans. Obviously, we do this with Housing Tiff has the ability to serve that 80% AMI and below. So there's going to be some proposals with Housing Tiff that can serve a workforce middle market as well. So we have some opportunities there that we are already using on a smaller scale, and we're going to be looking at presenting some of those larger scale policies and procedures for you.
And we have looked around the state at what I'd call dense development. And I, and I don't mean it in a negative sense. It is a very positive sense in that, okay, so if you're in the county, you know what it, how many you get per acre, you get one housing unit per acre. And then you get into most cities in Iowa, you get three to 3.2 houses per acre. There are some awesome developments around where you're getting five and six units per acre. And it doesn't mean it's cheaper. It simply means it's smaller and more specific to land use. And I raise it because of Councilman Spring's note that it, the young families. Actually, what's very surprising is when you do one of these developments, that's a two-bedroom with a single car garage and a small area that is theirs and then some shared area, community garden, et cetera. Early retirees are absolutely drawn to those communities because they're normally walkable, they're normally lower upkeep, they're not more space than they need, and it's still in the community in which they grew up. So you get kind of a double with, if you're looking at those types of developments. I would say it's very promising. The city of Dubuque has, and you have already had some times where you've looked at these opportunities and have embraced them and moved forward. What you really need are some developers who will step up, and hopefully you'll see this soon, developers who step up and say, we want to do this and we want to do it in partner with the, with the city, the smaller lots, but still nice lots, the green space, shared green space, and the density that allows you to start being able to say, yes, we have a way to generate 600 new homes even though the amount of land that looks like it's available might be fairly limited. So we will bring you some options, but what we really need are the developers to step up and say, these are the things that can work, here's how I can make my money, and here's how they maintain the level of quality that the city of Dubuque demands. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Good, Mr. Spring? All right. Yes, Ms. Farber.
Thank you. Dave, so as you were just talking about being able to walk or bike to the area services and entertainment, it would be interesting to see what your research determines about Main Street again. And I just gave a presentation Sunday to a group, to a church group, and we were talking about Main Street and how when I grew up in Main Street, how that was kind of the hub and everybody would meet and greet down on Main Street, whether they were attending to the establishments there or having dinner at one of the restaurants down there. And it would be interesting to know if that can be, that energy and that enthusiasm once again can be created for Main Street and people could walk to work, they could bike to work and/or retire and enjoy living amongst the bluffs here in that corridor, if you will, that extends to the Millwork as well, and walk to entertainment as well as leisure.
Having done some work in the Des Moines area, what I'd say is, is it isn't so much getting back to Main Street, it's recreating a community. And the communities are kind of organizing them, are almost organic. If you've ever been to East Village in, in Des Moines, as much as the city wanted to create this specific vision, it really took off when they basically allowed some flexibility for people to do different types of housing and to do different types of retail, et cetera. But they're finding that it only gets so big before it loses it. And now we have, now the new, the new sell side that is actually some people who are saying, I'd like to do this again someplace else. So I think what you're going to see is areas of town, Lower Main, Upper Central, Five Points, you're going to start to see where people are saying, yeah, I've got the bike trail and I've got the bus, which you've got a great system for transportation. I have new jobs that are coming down, and actually I moved from my job here because I'm working from home. And I've got high-speed broadband so I can do it. So I like the thought of recreating communities. So I really don't, what I've seen in others' places is, given some support and particularly the, kind of some flexibility in infill, infill development, neighborhoods rebuild themselves. They might not look like they did, you know, 100 years ago, but they sure feel like they did.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
Thank you very much for this information. It's kind of a wake-up call. And I'm wondering if this plan would include ways to help people navigate the homeownership process, as many of these people may be first-time home buyers. So if a home does become available, you know, they can take care of it.
Absolutely. There's a, there's an education piece to that and connecting with the businesses, actually, that are doing the hiring for workforce in connection with the housing department to have those types of things ready. And so we have a four-week class, and we do team with our, our businesses to get people through that if they're looking for first-time home buyers. But what we've been lucky this year is that some of our banks are providing it too. They reached out and saw there was that same need, and so they're actually doing some online classes to do some of the same stuff. So we're hitting more of the workforce when we see the banks coming and when people are going for mortgages and they say, oh, you've never had a home. It's, it's different than renting. And so we've already started that teamwork, and we do need to build on it. We need some more capacity, but our banks are already starting to step up to build that capacity with us.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, Dubuque actually has a very good reputation and relationship also with low and moderate income individuals coming off, being able to be trained into homeownership. So very, very positive. But one of the things you point out is, how do we, how do we not make this about six people at a DIAST, but 60,000 people taking advantage of programming? One of the things is there are data gaps in this town that are hard to maneuver when you're looking for information. I don't know what it's like in a lot of other places, but there's no way to find out how many apartments are open in Dubuque or where they're located because there's no central registry. So I can't, you know, if I'm from outside of town, well, we all know how it works. If you're from Dubuque or near Dubuque, you ask whoever you know in Dubuque, and they know. But if you're not from Dubuque and you take a look at what's online, or when you take a look at how you think you want, a neighborhood you want to move into and you can't find anything, that data is, is a real negative unless we have a way of educating people that, no, this is how you do it, and this is where the data is at, et cetera. So, yes, more transparency in the housing opportunities we have and their actual costs is kind of important.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. You know, the businesses would like some more workforce housing. And I used to live in the near neighborhood where there are John Deere houses. And the story that I got was that John Deere built these homes so that their employees could have an inexpensive place to, to stay. Is that the truth? And is there anything like that anymore?
Okay. Three anecdotal pieces for you. I wasn't here when John Deere built those homes. So I will tell you, however, that Google and Amazon are building homes for their employees in larger metro areas. So that concept does in fact exist. Number two, most of the large track homes that you see down in Des Moines, the Firestone homes, or the Rockwell homes, or the, et cetera, in different communities, were normally hinged on a federal or state funding process, coming back from war or coming out of a recession, et cetera. So that usually isn't always led just by a company saying it needs more. And the third issue is, I think you do have employers who are ready to hear innovative ways they can assist in the process. But again, my economics background just requires it, they like to stay with their core competencies. So what they'd be looking for is for the community to provide them a plan that they can invest in and be involved with so that they can continue to build tractors or, or drive trucks or provide medical care and not get into another line of business. But I will tell you, they'd be open to the conversation.
Did you have more or?
I was just going to add that some of the companies are doing that, but with existing housing stock currently. John Deere is one of them, where they purchased 20 of our workforce housing units, and they place their employees in them so that they know their employees have somewhere to go because it was such a dire need for them. When they had an employee come and they said, I can't live here, and they need them to be on the line, or they need the engineer there right now. So they've actually purchased some of those units to ensure they're there for their employees to move into. It's great for our community to have that prep, but it's also holding housing for, for that workforce that other workforce, you know, families need. So it is still existing. They're, they're not building. Contractors are hard to get. It would be something you'd have to bring a plan to a business, but those partners are out there and they're looking for a solution.
I don't know if you still have, keep the data on this, but when we came to town 37 years ago, we just moved into the sixth place we have in Dubuque. So you start small and with a small salary and a small family. As your family grows, you better get a better paying job. And then you get a larger home, and all this building up, building up, and then you retire and you have a smaller home. So it's the sixth place. Do people move a lot here in Dubuque or they want to? When you're saying, what do we want, you know, for workforce housing? Do they want a great place right away? The second point is, we always try to avoid renting because we were always told that renting is kind of throwing away your money as far as a family. So I'm just curious, we have 11,000 units and it's not enough, and we're, we're looking at rental, and, but we're, we're looking at both rental and, and building new homes, correct? So do we have any stats on how many times the average, you know, the average time people spend in a house?
So some of that comes actually from our real estate partners. So some of that data is available that we could pull for you. I don't have it here today. Didn't anticipate that question, sorry. But we have a second work session, so I'll make sure that we bring some of that data for you. It's going to tell you how much movement we have within our market, and that will give you an idea of how long people are staying in that specific home. It does not track, and we do not keep data, and no other entity does, on where they move to. So they may be moving up like you talk about, they may be moving to a bigger home, they may be moving down and downsizing as they age, but we don't know because no one tracks where that person went. So that data's not available.
Great. And your opinion on renting versus buying, of course, a lot of different opinions on that, and what's better for our community?
I've done both, and they're both great. What we see is that when you're looking to move to a community, if you haven't previously owned a home, renting is the preferred method to get used to your community and then look for the homeownership opportunity. So we really need to provide both because of that situation, unless you come from already owning a home and wanting to immediately own another home, whether it's wealth building or whatever that, you know, incentive is, sometimes it's a family incentive. That happens, but there's usually a transition. Even that, even when you do want to go from homeownership to homeownership, we see people will end up renting for about a month, or 12 months to see where they want to get a home. Or in our market, there just aren't homes available, and so they have to wait that long for something to come up that they actually want to purchase. Because as you know, homeownership is a really big commitment for a significant amount of time, and renting can be some of that short-term option until you find that, that right home.
And I can't resist adding one more item here. I'm sorry. I want to go back. We don't know whether they're going to smaller homes or larger homes or in what order, et cetera, but we do know one thing, more of them aren't doing it in Dubuque. So that's an important issue we'd like to be able to address. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Spring.
Kind of a last question, and I don't think anybody has data on this, but it might be something to look into, is the effect of what Airbnb is doing? Because here you're taking, people are taking their apartments or homes, and you're seeing this across the entire country. This is why rental rates have gone through the roof in coastal cities because they just, they're no longer, there's rentals, there's all just Airbnb properties. And so I'd really like to know if, if there's any data on that. It's probably not something that'll be another 10 years, but it'd be really interesting to see.
There's two takes on this right now on Airbnb, that yes, it does remove units that are meant for homeownership and put them into like a short-term rental situation, but some people still live in them. So Airbnb can be both, and no one tracks if you're still living in your home and just leave for, maybe you're a snowbird and you're leaving for a little bit and you're coming back. That's not really a tracked data, so it's more of the how many of those are taking the home away or how many are still habitating in that home and they're just using short-term for some revenue. So that's not the data that we have. But they also are saying that Airbnb was the idea of keeping a low price for short-term rentals, and that has changed significantly on Airbnb. Airbnb is more a luxury, and it did not used to be. So they are thinking, we're seeing statisticians starting to collect more of the data because they want to know, is it about to revert back where they are not going to, it's not going to be lucrative, they aren't going to have enough nights that are rented to make that make sense anymore? We're in that turn, but there's not a lot of data yet, but people are becoming more interested because one of this is a nationwide problem with housing units and is the, is it changing the rental market?
Thank you. This is a, I mean, this is a fascinating discussion, honestly. I mean, and I really appreciate you leaving so much time for us to be able to have this. There's just so much to it. I do have a couple of questions. So the, you know, you talked about, Dave specifically, you talked about other cities and the comparing Dubuque to those. So a couple of questions with that. I mean, one question is, is our problem like their, is our challenge like their challenge? I mean, do we have the same challenges that they're having? You know, are we sitting in a situation that is unique to other cities in Iowa? So that's question one. The second is, and you said a little bit about this, but, you know, you talked about, make it easier is what I wrote down here, in quotes, so you said it. So you said, you know, make it easier, basically, you know, and how are other cities doing that? You know, you talked a little bit about some of those pieces, but I'm really mostly, I would like to know most about Cedar Rapids and Madison because you used those two examples and the trajectory of, you know, what we're seeing from those. I'd really like to hear your thoughts on, on the information that is related to those.
You're not unique, but you are, may have more challenges than some of your counterparts do. For example, Des Moines has much the same issue in relationship to housing stock within the corporate confines of Des Moines. Job growth, but a lot of the new workers not living in Des Moines. And their response has primarily been multifamily homes downtown in vibrant name-your-place kind of opportunities and followed up with a very aggressive infill development. I don't know if you've recently seen it, extra support for two, four, six, and eight plexes to be actually built into open areas or revitalized lots within the community. So that's an example. Cedar Rapids has been, I think, community. So that's an example. Cedar Rapids has been, I think, a little bit more progressive as it's related to large projects, as you've seen them take on, you know, some of the major redevelopment in the community. But also, part of it is going down their housing issues. Part of it is, is that they've had how many major catastrophes and what percentage of their workforce housing was impacted and how many tens of millions of dollars have flowed in to redevelop those areas or to tear them down and, and to redevelop again. Madison is a lot of what I'd call the, the higher-end mixed development and the young person. You know, when you talk about, do you need a lot of one bedrooms and efficiencies? If you're growing with the new group of people who picked their town before they picked their job, which is really increasing in the world, they're not so much worried about the square footage that they're moving into. They want to make sure it's great, lively, a lot of things happening, et cetera. So what I'd say is, is that your challenge in that you are, well, on a river, it's hard to develop across a river. You are on the bluffs in a very developed community already. I used to say when I was talking with broadband companies, I'd like to tell you something good about building in Dubuque, but I can tell you we're friendly. Because there's constantly rock and old infrastructure. However, you are not unique in that workforce housing is probably one of the top three issues in the state right now. Lack of workforce housing, a lack of workforce childcare, and then the growing equity gap that's occurring in most communities between those who are earning in the 1% versus the rest. So.
Okay. Thank you. One other thing, one other point, and I don't know if this is a question as much as just a thought for it when you come back. But as you talk about this, and I, I feel like it seems like we do this a lot. You know, we have, we have a great downtown. We love our downtown. We love the focus on downtown, make sure that everything's, you know, the idea of having a vibrant downtown is, is central to what we need as a city. But we've got a very large west side and south side of town that we, you know, as you talked about the type of housing that we need, I'm picturing, you know, like the neighborhood where I grew up and all the different places that are on the west side of town and you think, well, that's workforce housing right there. I hope that as we make the suggestions and bring this discussion forward, that we don't forget the focus of all of our city, you know, because as you, you know, in, in the roles that we have, you go around and talk to a lot of people and, you know, you hear people say that they feel forgotten. The people downtown, you know, that are, are moving down here for the reason of the Millwork District, things like that, don't feel very forgotten. But people on the north side do, people on the west side do. That was my experience at least in listening to what people have to say. And I think that as we talk about development in this way, you know, thinking about some of the places that already exist, but then what can we do to, to make sure that those come along for the ride too?
Several of the local developers have raised the issue that you also have a particular, you have a particular problem that you're not the only city that has, but not every city has it. Best way to say it is, you had a lot of development in the late 60s and 70s, a lot of apartment buildings built, et cetera. Then the 80s hit. And guess what? They kind of went down. And while some of them have come back, you have areas in the community where literally there's 100 units that aren't occupied because they can't be occupied because they've been gone, let go to the level that they're really not livable. And that isn't downtown and just on the north end. It's on the west end and the south end, et cetera. So part of the overall strategy also has to be, how do you identify properties that weren't properly maintained or planned for and not lose those? Because it doesn't do us a lot of good, doesn't do us a lot of good to create 10 more housing units on Central Avenue if we lose 100 housing units on the west side. So I think that's just got to be part and parcel of the discussion as well. And I know those are all on the city's radar as well.
Well, thank you. This, this has been extremely helpful. I think I see heads shaking as we talk about this too. So this is, we're very much looking forward to hearing what you have in the next round as well. But this has been very useful and again, never easy to hear some of the challenges that we have and especially when they are this complex, but still something that we're very happy to know more about and looking forward to more. So, thank you. All right. There being no further business in this work session, we are adjourned.